I get a copy of it?
Yeah, sure. You get a copy of it. Alright, I think we're streaming right now. Alright, hey everybody, we're gonna just play a song. We're waiting on Jennifer from the Pawn Shop. We're here with Alex Mangone. That's how you say it, right? Mangone?
Mangone, Mongone, yeah.
Okay. Well, which one?
Mongone is proper.
Mongone, I'm going proper.
Yeah, go proper.
Alright, this song, it's called Alex.
Do I get the, do I get the rights to this song?
Sure, I'll give them to you. Me and Junior cut it in the studio last night. Happy Tuesday.
Nice, I like it.
Good Tuesday, everybody. You gotta get up closer to that mic, bro. Yeah.
That's the hook right there. That's right. That's right.
That's what me and my friends call this place, V-Town.
Look, he fucking nutted on my fucking leg!
Wrong button, my bad. Fuck, I meant to hit this one. Alright, shall we go into it? Really?
Ever.
Oh, me and Junior were up late last night cutting that in the studio. Alright, alright Junior, introduce the show. Try that, that black mic, yeah.
Hello?
Yeah, that was way better, dude. Way better.
Welcome to the motherfucking Ventura Tide Pod. Our guest is Alex, City Council Ordinance.
Mangone. Alright, welcome. Alright, welcome to the show, Alex.
Yeah, thanks.
Alex is, uh... So, this is a huge moment for our show because we've never had an actual person running for City Council. We had, we went to the mystery shop, we had Liz Compost, but we can never fool them into coming into our studio.
Liz, Liz, maybe Mike has called in before too, I think I've heard before.
Yeah, yeah, Mike, Mike has called in, but yeah, you're the first to actually make, brave enough to actually come in this piece. You got it? Here, why don't you scoot forward? You're making me uncomfortable. You're making me, cuz your legs, yeah, you need more rope on that? Need more length, or you need more girth? Get in there. Alright, so anyways, thi- this is like the, um, biggest audience participation show ever. We've had more questions sent in than any other show ever.
Nice, I like that. Okay, cool.
So, we got a bunch, and then I didn't actually look at them cuz I wanted to be like fair. I didn't wanna like, you know, say, oh, I'm not gonna ask this. I want to, so apologies ahead of time if some of them are like, out there.
Right on.
You know?
Yeah, you told me over fifty questions, but I have no idea what they were.
Over fifty questions were sent in by the people of Ventura, I'm assuming. So...
That's wild, right on.
And then everybody, look at the... Yeah, up there, 805-323-6224. If you wanna call in live, I'm gonna turn the ringer on. You can call in to the show. And to start it off, I think we have a voicemail for you, so let's start with that one, and we'll get to it. Okay, yeah, I think this is from Liz.
Well, hello, hello. Uh, you may not recognize my voice, this is Liz.
Yeah, we do.
Calling the Ventura Tide Pod. Uh, I hope you got the King of the North with you today.
Yeah, he's right here.
And maybe that delightful, uh...
That's right!
...Candice. And we know Mina Azul is always there.
No.
Um, I heard you're interviewing tonight, live and in person, Alex Mangone, who's running for Ventura City Council, for District Seven.
That's right!
Was represented by our mayor previously. He petered out. He couldn't handle the heat, I guess. Or maybe he just grew tired of the politics. Um, I'm glad Alex stepped up to run, and, um, I'm glad that another candidate who put in to run realized that Alex is the better person. And, um, stepped aside and endorsed Alex, as I have. I, I really look forward to serving with Alex on Ventura City Council, but don't let him slide. Give him some tough questions. And make sure he participates fully in the show. Alex, good luck. I know campaigning's hard. Alex is here hard. Um, there's a lot of information. You gotta come visit me and I'll, uh, fill you in. But tonight, I'm at City Council. I'd be there with you at the show. Take care and have a good time, everybody. Bye.
Okay.
Liz rules. I just saw that, I came straight here from, uh, from, uh, City Hall.
Okay.
Meeting, actually, yeah, so...
Got it. What's going on over at City Hall tonight?
What were they talking about tonight? Tonight, it was a couple things. The biggest thing was, um, the city is trying to have pre-approved plans for ADUs.
Ooh, I like you. I like you. Yeah, I need to get my mother-in-law into an ADU.
Into an ADU next to this private cave somewhere in the middle of town.
Might be in here. Yeah.
So, yeah, that's a good thing. That's what the city's trying to do. It's actually, the cities have been getting pressured by the state to have pre-approved plans for ADUs, kinda try to increase the housing stock here in California. So, that, that's a good thing. They talked about that and the plan.
I think it's very important. I mean, it keeps, so, like, Stoner Chris down the street, I mean, he gets the cheapest rent in Ventura, and like, anywhere you look, the cheapest rented Ventura is always somebody's ADU. Because the people of Ventura are generally pretty kind. They don't price gouge people. They're not in it for a buck. And he keeps the money within our community when they rent it out. I mean, if they're doing like Airbnb, that maybe is a different story. And that actually brings me to one of the questions that was asked to you, so, good segue by me.
Yeah, real quick though, yeah. Alright, we have an ADU ordinance here in Ventura, and if you have an ADU on your property, you're not allowed to, you're not allowed to rent your house or your ADU as a short-term rental.
Okay, there you go.
Doing that, they're not allowed to do that.
Okay, welcome to the show. We got Jennifer, yeah. Jennifer from the Pawn Shop of Ventura. Alright, we're coming in. Hey, for those of you that are just watching our show for the first time, uh, this is the Ventura Tide Pod. And, uh, generally, our show is basically like this. And, uh... You know, check out some of our other episodes.
These yours? Oh, I was gonna take the ones with the glitter on them, but...
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna, while, uh, everybody's getting situated, are we good on the, uh, so, Alex, why don't you slide your mic to Jennifer, and then you could take that one on the end there? Is that, wait, no, is that, test it out.
Is this working?
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Alright, fuck yeah, alright.
You got it together, that's for sure.
Uh, somehow. Alright, everybody, this is, uh, Jennifer of the Pawn Shop of Ventura. All the equipment in here is from the Pawn Shop. Okay. Uh, let's look in the chat here, be- before we get to that question. Uh, Daniel Bienes is sending much love from Simi Valley. Yo, 100 emoji. Alright, thank you, Daniel. Um, let's go. He's very excited about it. What's up, Daniel? We love you, man. Uh, thoughts on the property tax increase proposed in Midtown Ventura? That's what Alex wants to know in the chat, so... No, Alex, Daniel, sorry.
What property tax increase? I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, Daniel, call in. We don't know what you're talking about. And honestly... You're in Simi Valley, yo, as you said, so, maybe you're...
Is he just in there right now, or is that where he lives?
Uh, we don't know. And Mina says, hi, first-time watcher, yeah. Fuck off, Mina, and then... Uh, Prominent Ones says, hello, sirs, hello, ladies and gentlemen, much love, Alex, from Prominent Ones. That's RareBreed805 as well. Thank you. And then, uh, we'll be checking the chat throughout the night, so I'm gonna take a break cuz I can't do all this shit all at once. I can't multitask, you know what I mean? Yeah.
You focus on the list. Don't you have a list?
I do have, I do have a list, okay?
You do the list, I'll do the chat.
Alright, cool. So, let's check this out. Um, I'm going to the first question. This is, I segued perfectly and then I fucked it up. Yeah, I just, okay, this is from, uh, Crystal Morgan, Malibu-born, 805, Maui-born, 805, my bad. Question for Alex, what is his stance on short-term rentals and the approximately 2,000 in the Ventura City Limits? Ordinance has not been updated since 2009. Council keeps kicking the can down the road.
So, they have been kicking can down the road. Um, I've been meeting with kind of stakeholders on both sides. In particular, um, there's a guy, and a lot of people know if you pay attention to the council meeting, Terry Foley. He, uh, lives down in Pierpont. He's been trying to get a new ordinance passed for almost eight years now. Um, there isn't 2,000 in Ventura. There's 280 permitted ones, and there's 80 unpermitted ones that the city knows about. There's certainly more than that. I'm definitely a proponent of a new ordinance. Uh, the issue we have with our current one is it's not really enforceable, so we know people are breaking the rules of the ordinance, like having an ADU and renting it out short-term. They're not allowed to. But there's not a whole lot that the city can do about that. There's not really an enforcement mechanism. Uh, so, yeah, we certainly need, uh, ADUs have some value here in the, in the city. We don't have enough hotels, but, uh, my, my argument has always been, when are we gonna wait to do something about it until we have 500 or 1,000 or 2,000 ADUs? There's certainly people and companies buying homes in the city of Ventura. There's a couple that I know of in the last year, um, for the sole purpose of renting, renting them out as a short-term rental, which is, it's removing houses straight out of the housing stock for, for locals, uh, which is not, which is never a good thing, so... Yeah, so it's, uh, it's an issue that we need to deal with, and they certainly have been kicking the can down the road. That's something I've been promising to people down in Pierpont while I've been canvassing down there and everything. That's, that's something I'm gonna focus on. We might have something done by the end of this year, but if, you know, any, if, kind of our history on the city council dealing with the issue is any indication...
Get that mic right under you, I think.
They say, turn your mic up.
There? Is that working?
That, that look sounds way better.
Oh, okay. I felt like I, I heard it cutting out.
They just said it was low. They could still hear you.
Well, I'm not starting over.
No, no, they can still hear you. They just said it was low.
Okay, right on.
Uh, you're on the Tide Pod with, uh, Alex Mangone. You're on.
Alright, his mic is not working. It's not turned on.
Okay, tell me if you can hear him now. Go ahead, Alex.
Is that better?
Jen, give him your mic and then take this one. Tell me, excuse me, can you hear me, caller?
Um, I can hear you.
Okay, Alex is gonna, can you hear Alex?
Um, let's have him say something really quickly.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Is that better? The, the universe is telling me not to talk about STVRs, I guess.
So, you're telling me you can't hear that?
Tell me, excuse me, can you hear me, caller?
Um, I can hear you.
Okay, Alex, can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear him now.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright.
So, quick recap, S, uh, short-term rental ordinance, we need a new one. They have been kicking can down the road. We might have one by the end of the year, but not likely if you consider how long it's taken to get to this point. But, uh, yeah, I'm a proponent of a new ordinance for sure, one that's enforceable. Uh, STVRs, if people think it's not an issue now, it certainly can be and will be in the near future. Uh, and we need to look after the housing stock here in Ventura for, for residents and people who are, wanna live here, not just, uh, live in a hotel that's in a residential neighborhood. So, and like, again, there's, there's some value with STVRs. Um, they're important to have, especially in town here. We don't have enough hotels, so... Uh, but we gotta protect the residents and the housing stock here first. That's a priority for sure.
Okay, so I hope that answered your, several of your questions there. Hi, you're on the Tide Pod, caller? Hello?
Hey, how's it going?
Uh, pretty good. You sound very excited.
I was gonna mess with you guys, but then actually like, uh, this is actually really interesting. Regret's Eve not being on today.
Who?
It's Casey.
It's Marina.
Oh, hello.
Oh, my god.
You sound, I mean, I'm used to you sitting right next to me on the show. I didn't, I didn't recognize you on the phone.
Who the hell else is on?
Alright, so we have Jennifer from the Pawn Shop of Ventura right here, everybody.
Yeah, not on the phone. She's on the phone.
We have Alex Mangone. And Junior the Joint Roller, and my, uh, my name is Randall. Alright, what's up? Any, do you have a question for, uh, Alex?
Yes. Wait, hold on a second. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just...
Oh, my phone's not speaking.
Yeah, we'll just stop the show until, until you're ready, Mina.
Thank you so much. That's what you guys always do for me. I love it so much.
Alright, let's hear it. You didn't have a question. You didn't have a fucking question.
Daniel says, how about property owners that have ADUs they'd like to rent?
Oh, wait, no, that was my question. What exactly is an ADU?
ADU stands for accessory dwelling unit, which is basically a small, a small, uh, apartment you have somewhere on your property. Can it actually be attached? Some people convert their garage into a little studio or one-bedroom.
Granny flats.
Granny flat.
They can rent it to a local person.
Correct, so if you build ADUs, yeah. Don't make it a short-term rental, you're right.
Yeah, because it...
So then why are, so short-term rentals are bad? Bad, question mark?
No, they're not bad. I think too many is, is not a good thing. So, I know Mike was cutting out before, but right now, we have 280 permitted short-term rentals in Ventura. There's 80 that the city know about, knows about that are unpermitted. There's certainly more than that. And over half of those are in Pierpont and the Keys. So, there's, uh, there's certain lanes in Pierpont where 25% or more of the homes are STVRs or short-term rentals, Airbnbs, VRBOs. I think Pittsfield Lane has twelve, I think it has 12. So, one lane has 12 short-term rentals. So, you're, you're really changing the face of the neighborhood when you get too many STVRs in one area. Uh, and that's one, one concern that people have that are opposed to too many of them is, they need to be a little bit more spread out, and you can't do that without a, like, uh, an enforceable ordinance in the city of Ventura, and that's what we're trying to get.
Is there a good model?
There is, and that's part of the argument that people have been presenting to city staff is, we, we have a history in Ventura of trying to kinda rewrite the book. And, uh, finally, we're to the point now where, uh, the city attorney's office, Monica De La Hoya, is looking at neighboring cities like Carpinteria, um, and other cities in Southern California, even Oxnard, who have like strong enforceable STVR ordinances. And they're kinda taking the best parts of those to make our new one. So, that has been the issue why we haven't, in my opinion, have, had a new one yet, is because, uh, city staff has kinda been trying to do it on their own, you know, start from scratch, and we can just look at neighboring cities and, and at their ordinances that have been working for them.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, very nicely. Plus, like, this, you are one of the most thoughtful guests. Oh, my god, that was like an actual answer.
Yeah, plus like the, those vacation rentals, that, all they're doing is filming, uh, pornos in there. That's what I heard, yeah. Airbnbs, they get Airbnbs and they film porns.
I haven't heard anything.
Hey, it's helping me.
I'm just trying to get the people on, uh, Alex's side here, yeah. Alright, well, uh, the great, this is the great Mina Azul, everybody. Give her a follow, at Mina underscore Azul underscore, and give her follow, uh, everything, right? All platforms?
Yeah, but don't try to talk to me. Stay out of my DMs. Don't talk to me. You can look, but don't talk.
And, yeah, and she's been in the, uh, lobby, everybody, more dick pics. That's what she's, was, been requesting, so keep sending them over to her.
I will forward them straight to Randall. And now Alex. You know what, Alex, would you like some?
No.
Yeah.
No.
If anybody wants to, uh, get on...
Are you gonna hear him? Yes?
I think he said yes.
That was a hard no.
I think he said yes.
Yeah, he's in politics. Don't send him dick pics. That's how you like get your, uh, political career ruined.
We've seen it happen, man.
Yeah.
I mean, in Ventura, we kinda saw something like that happen recently.
Yeah, didn't somebody send like a chocolate dick from that?
There was a little worse. There was an incident in Chick-fil-A, I think.
Oh, yeah, 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 we, we did cover that.
Oh, you guys covered that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, I hear, you know, there's a lot of porn out here and vacation rentals, so if any politician needs a new career, you know what? It's all set. It's right there. Just do the short-term rentals. You're good.
There you go.
Yeah.
Alright.
Was that the moral? Moral? I think.
Maybe Mina should run for City Council, yeah. Alright, so here's a question. I'm just gonna read off, uh, one of the many. We gotta get to these, otherwise, cuz, uh, we gotta end the show before, uh, 10 o'clock.
Yeah, I have another one in the chat.
Wait, I gotta go to bed tonight. Bye.
Alright, alright, bye, Mina. That's the great Mina Azul, ladies and gentlemen, so, uh, check out her OnlyFans, Playboy, all that stuff. I see your sign, this is, uh, from the internet. I see your signs everywhere. How does the funding work for those? What do you say when your kids drive by them? That's three...
My kids are pointing them out all the time, especially when they're in yards. They're stoked to see all the signs. The signs, you just gotta, I mean, the way, the way funding and campaigning works is you just ask people to give you money. For the most part, I haven't been doing that much. I was fortunate enough to kinda get the ball rolling early on this, and, uh, there was quite a few people here in town that were, uh, excited that I was running for City Council in District Seven, so... I really haven't had to ask for money, which is the most awkward thing. Um, I just had one fundraiser. It was a private fundraiser, which was awesome. Uh, my whole goal was to raise just enough money that I, enough money that I needed to buy my signs, pay for my, uh, my canvassing materials, and do a couple mailers, so... So, I got just enough to do all that. Uh, but yeah, signs, I just, you know, people contributed to my campaign. I think anywhere from like, the lowest I got was 25 bucks, and the max is $400. So, I got anywhere between 25 and $400 contributions to my campaign, and I just ordered the signs. All my stuff, all my mailers, all my, my, uh, canvassing materials, signs, everything I ordered from a, a local print shop here in town. And, um, yeah, it's expensive. It's, it's, it costs a lot to do this campaigning thing, but that's pretty much where 100% of my funds, my campaign funds was, or went to, was to signs, uh, canvassing materials, and my mailers. It's pretty much it. All of it went to that, so...
Alright, very good.
I got one in the chat.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Prominent Ones wants to know how you feel about the local music community and did it go out? Technical difficulties, people.
That was weird. Nobody touched it.
Mine's working, mine's working.
So, Prominent Ones wants to know how you feel about the local music community? Doesn't want me to ask this question. Just doesn't want, doesn't like the question.
Alright, alright. Nobody move.
Where is it?
Nobody move.
Okay.
Okay.
Ask Alex how he feels about the local music community and how can both sides support each other?
Good question.
I don't just know what both sides mean.
Maybe, uh...
He's talking about artists and politicians.
In the city, in the city.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there a place for them to work together on the music?
There should be. There should be a place, right? I think, uh, there's, in, in Ventura, especially in the downtown zone, there's a lot of emphasis on like the arts, and certainly the music scene is part of that. I think so, right? It's not just people doing painting and sculptures. So, I think, uh, the music scene, I mean, unfortunately, I think in the city of Ventura, the music scene is, is really, is, uh, kinda supported by the private businesses, especially in the downtown area. Um, it wasn't always like that. You know, I'm, I'm 44, so when I was in my twenties, there was places to watch bands all over the place, so hopefully we can get to that.
Nickel Bees.
Yeah, Nickel Bees was the spot back in the day, remember that?
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of, yeah, the younger generation never got to experience Nickel Bees. It's unfortunate. Um, but, uh, yeah, certainly there is a place for that, and there should be a place for that.
Alright, is there, uh, how will you change the public's perception of our council as incompetent or lacking transparency?
One thing I've been saying this whole time is kinda one of my ultimate goals is to change the public's perception, perception of leadership here. Um, I think I even put that phrase on my website somewhere. But, um, and I, and I say that as someone who's been kind of actively involved and has seen that transparency is a problem. And, um, if the process isn't transparent, then people don't trust the leadership. And then, if they don't trust the leadership, um, it makes it even harder for a leadership to get the job done, right? Like, if the, if the people don't, don't believe in what you're doing. So, that is one thing, that's one promise I've always made, you know, in my opinion, we only have a couple council members right now that are really connected to the community, and it's regardless of whether you agree with their policy or their politics. I think that shouldn't matter. I think council members have a, a responsibility to stay connected with the community, and if that's just being out on the town like Liz is, I mean, she's everywhere.
Everywhere.
Um, Mike Johnson makes a lot of effort, uh, to, to stay connected to the community. I mean, he has meet, meet and greets a couple, couple times a month. Uh, I've, I've been to a couple of those. I've been to one where there was 10 people, and I, he just had one at Duke's, which is kinda down the street from my house, uh, a few weeks ago, and there was four people there. So, but he still does it. He does it regardless, so... Um, and I think as long as people know that you're doing that, um, I think people have a little bit more trust in, in the leadership, regardless of whether they're showing up or not, right? So...
And then, uh, I guess the other part of that would be, how would you change the, the incompetent label of council? I guess you just have to be competent.
You just gotta be competent.
If, uh, one thing I'll say, just as an outsider, is when I, every city hall meeting that I go to, I see you there.
Yeah, I'm at everyone.
You're there. You're at everyone, and you actually, you know, I'm, and I'm talking not Alex, but you know more about what's, what they're talking about than Doug Halter. To be honest, that dude is like, he's always like, I gotta read out more on this. Like, he doesn't know what's happening. I'm just saying, cuz that's my rep. Like, he's always like, it seems like he didn't read the night before or something.
You know, I, I started getting more, and the more and more I got involved, the more I kinda started nerding on the process, and the more frustrated I got because of that. Yeah, that's certainly true. If there's anybody at a council, council meeting, and they're till the whole time, it's me, that's for sure, especially in the last couple of years, but it's been longer than that. Um, I did that, that was intentional. Um, um, kind of like, I, it was important to me, you know, I, I love the city. It was important to me just to kind of figure out what was going on. And also being there and realizing that, uh, we had, uh, you know, cer- certain council members that were not really paying attention. They weren't prepared coming to the meetings, and that's frustrating as somebody who, who cares about the process and cares about what's going on here in town, when, uh, council members are asking questions that, as someone who's kind of like, just a casual observer, I can answer those questions when I'm sitting in, in the council chambers. That's frustrating, right?
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, I'd agree.
Alright. I will, I think some people want, they wanna like have big parties or something, you know, that's a status thing, maybe, I don't know.
You know, I don't, I don't know if...
Or they're burnt out.
I don't know if not caring is, is the right way. I, I get, it certainly comes off like that.
What I mean, not care about being prepared.
Right, 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 and that, yeah. No, yeah, cuz I, I think, I think you'd have to be out of your mind to do this if you didn't care on some level, right? Maybe people have different, uh, different kind of, they have different reasons of why they're doing it, and, and there's different personalities, but I agree that, uh, it certainly seems like someone doesn't care, and you, and you can imply that if they're coming to the meeting and they're not prepared.
Well, yeah, if you take all the time to run for City Council, and you spend the money, and you spend the time, and you get on, then, then why would you just not come prepared?
Right, I've asked, I've asked myself that question many times.
Um, okay, connect the coast.
Hey! I like that guy.
Would you ever consider spending some of your budget with local media like VTP, podcasters and content creators on a local level need support too?
Alright, so I think you're, I don't know what's going on with your mic, cuz you're not moving and it keeps going on. Anyways, he's asking, is there a budget? Are you gonna give the budget to podcasters, which I, I, I'm, good question. Are you gonna give us money?
We know who's asking first. I don't, no, honestly, I don't know how that would work. There's, um, I think there's probably some kinda like grant funding, the city, I mean, the city obviously provides grant funding for like the arts and stuff, and that would have to be something to do with that. What, what the details of that would be, would be tough for me to answer right now, but, um, I think, I think that's certainly, uh, something that should be considered, supporting, um, supporting, especially podcasts that are kind of community podcasts. That's something that how I kind of view this. It's like a cultural podcast, right? It's get, it's keep, keeping people connected to, to what's going on in the city.
You could go, couldn't you go on these things without using money? Wouldn't you just...
I could go, yeah, and I'm, yeah.
Just giving the podcast.
Just hopping on is enough. Hey, you're, you're on the Ventura Tide Pod, caller.
Sorry, mine is not, not cracked.
Yo.
Yo. Welcome to the show. Much love to you on this Tuesday night. How's everything going on your end?
What's popping? It's the Holy Lord Sanctus.
Oh, Holy Lord Sanctus. Alright, this is the, uh, the God of the Coast. This is the guy that connects up and down the 805. Uh, welcome to the show, Lord Sanctus. You're my guy.
I love that you got, I love that you do this with local, with local politicians and, and community members. Um, but I wanted to clarify my question. I mean, like, as somebody running a campaign, you have to, uh, I mean, run ads, I'm, I'm assuming digital ads, you know? You're, you're, you're doing your mailers, you're doing all these things. Is there a world where you would spend your ad budget with these local... your ad budget with these local media platforms like Ventura Tide Pod? Would you consider doing that? Um, if it didn't go against any kind of compliance issues, anything like that?
No, yeah, I'd certainly consider that. And I don't think it would go against any kind of uh, like rules against advertising or anything like that. The only rules against uh, spending campaign, campaign funds on anything really is that they're um, is that you just make, you just make it clear where the money's come from, coming from, right? So if I was to do an ad, say on this podcast or yours or any other one, I would just have to make it clear that, you know, my campaign was paying for the ad or the time on the, on the podcast and you wouldn't be breaking any rules or any laws, campaign finance rules.
Would you be down to like commit like two hundred dollars to Ventura Tide Pod and advertise on?
This show was paid for by Alex. We disclosed it for you. No, ladies gentlemen, we are not getting any money for this show. This is, and we refuse money.
But I am very serious. I do think that like locally, these guys have a, have a really uh, really clear um, and distinct voice in the community and have the finger on the pulse of what's going on. I think you would be missing an opportunity if you didn't do something like that and politicians would do something like that. So I just wanted to say that. Also, for anybody that's interested in local politics, I've built a tool. I just wanted to say I've built an AI tool where I've uploaded all of the eight oh five cities, laws and plans into this AI tool. And if you just wanna know, um, have it broken down to you in layman's terms, so when you go to city council meetings or things like that, you can understand what they're talking about. Um, so if anybody wants access to that tool, let me know, I'd be happy to share.
What's it called?
It doesn't have a name, it's, it's a private thing.
Lord, Lord Sanctus is on another level, like he's, I think he's secretly, secretly running the universe. Yeah, but this guy's on the next level, like uh, Lord Sanctus, why don't you just buy city council?
Why, why don't I what?
You just buy city council, you could just run the, you should just run the entire eight oh five.
It's in the works.
Or are you?
It's not time yet, but it's in the works. But that's all I wanted to say, y'all. Keep doing your thing, keep doing your thing.
Alright, much love. That's uh, the Lord Sanctus. Everybody check out CTC Radio, the only radio station committed to the coast. He's the only one out there playing uh, local music for these artists out there, so uh, give him a follow, that's at Connect the Coast. Uh, I love that guy. He's er, early on the Bitcoin, early on the Bitcoin, man. That guy's gonna be running everything. Do you have uh, do you see hope for tenants to be protected from unscrupulous landlords? Or would you just say, if you can't afford to live in Ventura, just move?
I do see hope. Um, it's, it's unfortunate that we have, we don't have any ton, type of uh, stronger tenant protections uh, currently. There's been an attempt in the last couple of months to do that and it's gonna happen, so. You know, the one thing you realize when you start getting involved in like the process of like low, even local government is things never happen as fast as you think they should happen. And that's uh, for a bunch of different reasons and it's unfortunate, but that's just something that, um, I've, I've had, actually had a hard time. I've, I've had a hard time just coming to that realization too. And I still have a hard time. I don't think I'm ever gonna be comfortable with it. But um, I'm confident that's gonna happen and uh, and that's a good thing.
Uh, do you think there's gonna be a short-term rental impact on uh homelessness? And they're gonna drop some stats on us here. Did you know that while there's approximately eight hundred and fifty SDVRs licensed in Ventura, there's known to be up to four hundred illegal ones? That's twelve hundred rental units off the market. No, I didn't know, know that.
Yeah, I didn't know that. I didn't know the numbers are that high. I don't know where those numbers came from. The numbers I have are lower, but regardless, I touched on that, but yeah, it's a, it, it's an issue. It's something that the city should have taken care of a long time ago.
Alright.
Read this question. I, do we have? I don't have a microphone. Do I have a?
Yeah, you do now.
How do you feel about creating a more bikeable, walkable Ventura and programs like Main Street Moves from VCKC?
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, that's something that was talked about.
Took Junior's question, he's, Junior's very mad. You took his question.
I was just gonna ask him, uh, what does he think of reopening Main Street again?
I'll touch that one first. So actually, I forgot it. I had the uh, so the, the last final survey came out. They just had a uh, Main Street Moves subcommittee meeting last night about that. So the city council decided to make their determination on whether or not to open Main Street based on this final survey. The survey was only given to business owners and property owners. They could only take it one time each. And uh, overwhelmingly, more overwhelming, pretty much sixty, over sixty percent of the property owners within the closure want Main Street open to cars again. Um, in almost every property owner answered the survey. It was like ninety-two percent or something like that. Uh, only sixty some odd percent of the business owners downtown answered the survey, which was unfortunate. I was hoping a lot more would, would answer it, but it's pretty split. It's like fifty-fifty basically. Um, with the business owners, whether, whether or not they want it open to cars or not, so. The city council is gonna use that information to make their determination on whether or not they're gonna make it permanent. But based on that's final survey, which we should have had years ago, um, they're probably gonna open it up to cars again how it used to be. So that'd be my guess. If I was on the city council, that's what I would do based on the survey. Um, you know, I, I've always said that I'm a, I'm a fan of the closure, just because um,
The vibes, man.
The vibe, right? It's good to walk down there. I think the biggest complaint I hear about the closure is not convenient. I think that's just like a mentality thing. I think if people slowed down a little bit, it wouldn't be as convenient as you thought. I go down there all the time. It's not that big of a deal to find parking spot. But regardless, if it's not working for the business owners and it doesn't really matter what my opinion is, cause I don't have any skin in the game down there, right? And the unfortunate part is that we're four years into the closure and it still looks kinda hodgepodge and the city really hasn't done what they could have done to help the business owners within the closure, which is unfortunate, right? Uh, they've kind of been left on their own, right? I think people, business owners downtown who have been successful throughout the closure have done it because they've made it work for themselves. It's not because of something the city has done for them, right? Which is not the right approach. So I think it was, the whole thing was handled horribly. Um, and uh, so yeah, we'll see. I think in the next month or so, we're gonna find out what city council decides to do.
Alright, any predictions?
Yeah, I think they're gonna, based on this final survey, I think if they don't choose to open it back up to cars again, they're gonna be basing their decision off of feelings and not kind of the data. That's my, that's my opinion.
Alright, um, are you making an effort to meet other council persons before the election? Because once in office, the Brown Act will control your ability to connect with them.
That is true, that is true. So I have, um, I've had sit-down discussions with every council member on kind of, at, at least on a casual level, um, all of them but one. Uh, and that will happen, the last one will happen. Um, I think that's important. I think one problem with our current council is there was, they didn't really have any connection with each other. And um, I think if you don't know kinda where you're coming from with the people you're supposed to be working with, then it gets really hard to make informed decisions, right? Uh, so even if they agree on what the outcome should be, it's very, really difficult for them to even get to that point. And I think part of that is, part of it's cause you know, most of them were elected during COVID and they weren't, didn't really campaign. Their first like few months on city council was on Zoom or a WebEx, which is weird. Uh, so, yeah, I've, I've been definitely putting, putting in some effort for that.
Yeah, they're, they're like the rest of us, had a doubt of disconnect.
That's correct, yeah.
This is a moral question, ooh. Alright, I'm gonna ask it to you first, Junior. And Alex can follow up. If a powerful coun- if a powerful council person came up to you on the night you're sworn in and told you you have to vote a certain way, what would you say?
What certain way should I vote?
He's saying, you gotta vote no.
On what?
Doesn't matter. He's just telling you to vote, yeah.
He's just telling you, this is what I want you to do.
This is what, what's gonna happen, bro.
Or else, kinda thing.
Vote no.
No, I would vote on my own.
Okay.
That's a good answer.
And then, you know, we'd have to, we can't be quiet. We have to be spoken out to so they can hear our voices. We don't speak our voices and nobody's gonna hear us. And we don't, you know, how do you say, um, if you don't vote, then nobody's gonna know what you voted for.
That's right. Good answer. Alright. Would you change that answer in any way?
I wouldn't.
No, okay, good job. Good job, Junior, you killed it. Maybe you should run.
Okay, we have a question here. Uh, since there's about four hundred people in Ventura experiencing homelessness, why should they vote for Alex, assuming they're in his district?
Wow, that's a difficult question to answer.
Wow, I just threw it out there.
Yeah, they did.
That was from Stalin Nicole Smith.
Okay, Nicole Smith with the heat.
We certain, the city certainly, well, the city is doing a lot right now to kind of help the homelessness population. I mean, we have the La Quinta, I think the first residents are gonna be moving in there. I think there's some living in there now. They're gonna phase out. If everyone doesn't know what the La Quinta project is, is, it's uh, it's the old La Quinta Hotel on Victoria behind the old Salzers, uh, the Salzers rec, or Salzers video. So they turned that into a permanent supportive housing. They're basically gonna make every single room a studio apartment with a kitchenette and everything. So I think they have, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna screw up the numbers, but it's, it's within a few dozen residents living in there now while they're doing the second phase. Um, so they just have like, I think, a little small cooktop in there. And then they're gonna transition them into the real studios once they have the kitchen, kitchenettes and eventually there's gonna be, I wanna say like a hundred and eighty s- permanent supportive units in that, that building. So the city's doing a lot. They got money obviously from the state to do that. But the city doesn't, the city of Ventura has a revenue problem. I mean, if you drive around the streets, you could, you know why. I mean, it's like driving on a dirt road sometimes. So we certainly, we're, we're limited in what we can do to kinda combat the homelessness issue here. Uh, but the, the county's different. So we can certainly work more with the county, put a little bit more pressure on the county. All county services are here within the city of Ventura. So uh, I think uh, the, this, I think the council and the staff is doing a good job right now and try to get the county to provide more services within the city and not put so much on uh, not, not have our own city services be so reliant on helping the homelessness population.
Alright, alright. That's, it's a tough problem.
It's a tough problem. Everyone's dealing with it.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
A couple of people are saying the mics are cutting in and out.
Mics are from the pawn shop, ladies.
Not all of these are, actually.
I don't know what's going on, I apologize, people, and then, you know, eh, it's my fucking fault, but like, if uh, we are recording everything and we will repost tomorrow with proper audio and it might be the uh, livestream too, I don't know. Sorry, that's, sorry. I suck.
I wanted to ask, what, what do you think about? Because they're saying that you guys can have hot asphalt in Ventura, cause it doesn't stay hot. You know how you fix the streets on asphalt? There's, I guess there's no way to keep it hot.
I haven't heard that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, cause that's, they're saying that in the streets.
It's not hot enough, so the, the asphalt can't, you can't use hot asphalt, cause it's hot. I mean, he's not a construction, are you a construction worker? Yeah, let's, let's.
I know why we have so many potholes is because we haven't been fixing the potholes. That's, that's the simple explanation to it, right? I mean, it's really as simple as that. We've had the money budgeted to do potholes for years and they just haven't been fixing the potholes. It's deferred maintenance is the issue here in Ventura. It's not that we haven't budgeted. Well, we certainly haven't budgeted enough in the recent years, but this is a, the pothole problem is not from two wet winters. Excuse me, it's, it's been uh, decades of deferred maintenance for sure.
And an increase in traffic.
Yes.
Okay, I think I fixed it. Apologies. Uh, oh, that, this goes perfect. Um, how does he see budget? Um, sidewalks, they're bad.
They are, they're horrible. Like I said, there's.
They're good for jumps.
Yeah.
And on bikes.
Yeah, that's about it. Not good for walking, but for a bike, they're cool. Yeah, there's uh, fifty million, over fifty million dollars in, in uh, fi- fi- over fifty million dollar backlog in capital improvement projects in the city of Ventura, so. We don't have that fifty million dollars, so that goes to show how, how much deferred maintenance we've had over the last like ten years or plus, maybe even, probably even more. So um, that's uh, due to many issues. A lot of it is mismanagement of the infrastructure. But yeah, everyone knows the sidewalks and the streets are, are horrible in the city of Ventura.
Which is always my number one question. Every time we talk about housing, it's like, what are we doing about the infrastructure people? And nobody ever likes that question.
Yeah, well, there's a, there's, there's a, there's a little, there's a answer that's not the, the kinda, it's not the end-all be-all to fix the pothole and the sidewalk issue, but um, right now, all these new, people are asking, people ask me all the time, like, there's new developments, how come they're not fixing the streets or adding crosswalks or new streetlights around all these new developments? And the reason for that is, is when there's a new development in the city of Ventura, when there's a new development built, they, the developer pays what's called a traffic mitigation fee. That's a, basically, let's just say, let's try to like, in layman's terms, is a percentage of whatever the project cost is. And that money is supposed to go to fix the infrastructure around that new, new development. Whether that's, you know, add some streetlights, maybe make some more lanes in the roads, stop line, stop signs, whatever, whatever it is. Make the streets and the sidewalks better around the new development. But city council, three years ago, approved using all of our past and all the traffic mitigation fees in, in the future in perpetuity to go to a project that's called the Johnson Drive Extension. If you haven't heard of that.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so that's where all our traffic mitigation fees are going, because there's those landowners over there, which basically said off of the Santa Clara River. Who, which it's a good idea to kinda build a, almost like a new commercial zone over there. You can't build houses, it's in a floodplain. So the, the lando- landowner, landowners over there said, if the city, they wanted the city of Ventura to split the costs of the infr- infrastructure. They said, we'll build the levee wall if the city of Ventura pays for the infrastructure to, in the roads to get to that land. And then they can build like big box stores, maybe a collection style development, retail. There wouldn't be any houses, it would be all retail and commercials and stuff, so. All the traffic mitigation fees from all these new developments and past developments is going towards that. So that answers the question um, that people ask all the time. How come you're not fixing the roads around these new apartments? And that's the reason why.
Yeah, wow, Johnson Drive too, it's like, pumpkin patch. I don't know if he's homeless. Any ideas or solutions? Dude, nobody has a solution to homelessness. You know, it's not so easy, I mean.
Yeah, that's like the most difficult, I think, subject to deal with.
Stop people from becoming homeless. That's where we need to focus, in my opinion, because uh, keeping rent down as much as we can, um, not losing our youngest residents, keep, keep our youth in Ventura. And uh, try to, I mean, we, we, we don't really create jobs, but I mean, you know, get some kind of a infrastructure for people can actually stay in the city and make money in the city, you know?
Yeah, it's a, that's a big problem.
But the, once you're homeless, that's complex. That's like uh, mental health, that's drug addiction.
There's people who are, lose their job, down on their luck, get priced out of the rental market, you know, whatever, have some kind of like um, personal financial disaster that leads them to homelessness. And then you have the mental health issue and, and the drug addiction issue. There's so many components. Each of them have to be dealt with differently. Um, when you're, when you're a candidate for city council, you do these forums. There was just a homelessness and housing, affordable housing forum. And all the candidates for all those district races were there. And it's, it's, it's kind of a weird format, right? Like people ask you these really serious questions about homelessness and you have like ninety seconds to give an answer. And there's someone who's like, it's literally like a ninety seconds is up and they cut you off. So nobody, and you, you, you have some smart people there and you even have a couple candidates who have uh, like, you know, experience being homeless and have worked in like, you know, help, trying to help the homeless population and no one has a real definitive answer on how to solve any of the issues, right? Everyone has ideas, but it's, it's a tough one.
In uh, beautification ideas, do you have any?
Yeah, fix the roads, number one.
Alright, there you go.
Fix the roads and sidewalks, more trees. I think there's like two thousand tree wells in the city of Ventura that are missing a tree.
And don't be cutting the trees in the fairgrounds.
Oh, they're gonna cut those?
No, they cut them.
Oh, that's right, they did for the X Games, right?
Cut them down.
Yeah.
I see the beach.
Yeah.
Don't care about what anybody says. We want those trees cut.
Yeah, I heard about that.
Too late on that one then.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And investigate Ventura Fairgrounds too, cause we don't know who's, who's in charge of the Ventura Fairgrounds. They're letting people go. As easy as they come in.
Yeah.
So, we need to figure out what's, who is the CEO, cause every three months, they change CEOs and they don't know.
Yeah, I think we've had three in the last, three in the last uh.
Oh no.
Disaster.
Sounded like it.
Sorry, that sounded like somebody got fried there. Try to get a new one like this.
It's back, but not great.
False alarm.
That was like an alarm alarm. That sounded like.
Yeah.
It sounded like frying an egg.
Something's cooking underneath this table like all the wires.
I, I have something from the chat here.
Uh, yeah.
Dee Salisbury says, I don't know why the algorithm suggested this to me, but I guess good luck.
Uh, okay. Hey Salisbury.
Daniel says, thoughts on paid parking downtown?
Paid parking downtown, yeah. That's a, that's a hot one. Well, you're certainly gonna see more paid parking downtown. Um, and you're gonna see another structure down there eventually. There we go.
Yeah. Are we good? Okay, okay, okay.
Mickey Mouse show here.
Try, give, give me a little uh.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go, say, say the word.
Word. Alright, alright. So yeah, you're gonna see more paid parking downtown and you're gonna see, eventually you're gonna see another structure. The structure's gonna go where the farmer's market used to be. Which is on Palm.
That's been in the works for a long time.
Been in the works for a long time. Um, the only thing that I would say to look out for is. There's two reasons to have a parking, a new parking structure downtown. That's obviously to, you know, there's some good reasons why we need more parking down there. I'm not totally. Anti-new parking structure. Um, I am kind of opposed to having paid parking everywhere. I think it's uh, I think it's good for people visiting the city of Ventura, but. Already as it is now with the closure and having to pay for parking everywhere, you certainly know people who were. Locals in particular who will avoid downtown because they have to pay for parking.
I'm nev- I'm never ever gonna fucking pay for parking. I'll walk ten miles before I park.
I will never pay for parking either.
But that's cause I grew up here.
But I would like to just add one thing, my own perspective in this particular one because this chaps my hide. I am very irritated as somebody who works in a business and lives in midtown. That midtown is pretty neglected in consideration to the focus on downtown. And in my opinion, instead of a parking structure downtown. And continuing to drive people to literally one place in Ventura. Why don't we take that money and put it towards more of a revitalization in midtown? And have, have either a continuation, either from downtown to midtown or two little. Walkable, enjoyable, nice places for our little city to enjoy because. When you look at the stark difference between the attention and the money and everything that's thrown at downtown versus midtown. When they're literally just on one side of the hill than the other and midtown is fricking awesome. I'm like this, the, the way it's laid out, the little structures, all the retail businesses. There's little gems hidden all up and down Maine. And it is, is, since I've lived here, it's always irritated me. That the focus is just continuously on downtown, 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 downtown. And midtown is just sort of.
A ghost.
A ghost town.
I agree. Yeah, you're not the only one that feels like that. I felt the same way. I think uh, one thing I, one thing I've been saying if council decided to make the downtown closure permanent, keep Main Street moves permanent was that. You're gonna see, and I know some of them retailers get out of, down, out, out of, within the closure.
Well, Snapper Jack's already closed.
Already did. So it, but the positive of that, I, I've been saying over the last year in particular is that. It's a, eh, eh, that would be a, kind of a net benefit for the midtown corridors like Thompson Avenue and, and Main Street more towards Ventura High School. There's a lot of, there's some vacancy spots in some of those areas. And there's some like killer little buildings, good spots for retail. What downtown has that midtown doesn't have is its own like business district, right? So we have. That's the, that's the main difference. So downtown has an organization that helps organize all the events. They, they raise the money from, they collect fees from the business owners down there that hate, help pay for like the red shirts, the trashcans. The cleanup of downtown, Main Street, the closure. That's all paid for by collecting fees from the, from the business owners, right?
Right, I know, I get that. But also wasn't that whole organization kinda sort of started and organized? By city council or city operating, people that operate in the city? So why can't they do something similar for the businesses in midtown?
There's, and there's talk about that happening. There's people been talking about that for a while and it certainly will happen. Why it hasn't happened yet, I'm not sure. I've even talked to property owners, non-ame business owners, and they are, they like the idea of like a midtown business district.
Cause I mean, the mall, we have the mall, I mean.
Yeah.
It's like.
And so, yeah, you need something like that. You need an organization to kind of like. Where all the business owners within that district will pay a small fee and that fee is gonna go to advertising. You know, clean up a little bit, help, helping creating events.
Sure, but I think the city has a big role to play in that. Like, they're not gonna just turn around and like put it on the business owners and be like. Oh, you guys need to organize and do this. Because I know for a fact that a lot of city people are directly involved with. The organization downtown. So it would have never, ever, ever happened without those people.
Oh no, yeah, we have current.
I ju- I think midtown deserves the same respect.
I, I agree.
And so do the business owners.
Well, at least you're not like Saticoy.
Saticoy is part of the city of Ventura.
Oh, I mean, at least you're not on the east end. The, nobody cares about those people, yeah, yeah. They're totally fucked out there.
You don't even have a grocery store.
Parts of the city, just for people that might not know, can you describe District Seven? Like what exactly does it cover?
And did they change it?
Yeah, it changed. So was it two years ago, there was redistricting? So we, Ventura's had district based elections for six years. And then after that first four years, they redistrict after they did the census. Um, so all the districts have close to the same amount of population. Um, the districts now make a lot more sense. In terms of like boundaries as they, than they did the first time. Now you can kind of look at the district based map. Um, and you can kinda see like the west side is District One, which is pretty much downtown and all the avenue. District Seven is from Fur or Plaza Park, which where the post office is.
There it goes.
There it goes.
Did he just do that on purpose?
No, I was trying to get it cause I was getting like feedback. And I was trying to do it without anybody noticing and then. Alright, so go, go ahead. District Seven.
Can you hear it?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I don't.
No.
Word. There we go.
There we go.
Right on. So District Seven, it goes from Fur Plaza Park where the post office is downtown, all the way to the Keys. And Main Street is a cutoff, so it's Main Street West towards the beach. Does that make sense? So Main Street is kind of the. The border between the beach and the hillside for District Seven. And north to south, it goes from Fur or Plaza Park. All the way to the Keys. If you go to my website, alexforventuraatcouncil.com, there's a, and eh, there's a link on there for the interactive map of the city. And it shows you exactly the streets of the borders.
And who's the one that takes care of the west part?
That's, that's Liz's district.
Junior, Junior, you, you're gonna have a discussion with her, right?
No, I did. I did have a.
You did.
And that's what she told me too, is they, they're asking for people to get paid, like basically pay them to go inside the gym to use it. You have to use the gym.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like that.
You know, it was supposedly open for the community when I was growing up. It was always open. We always played handball, I always played pool. We had the boxing gym open. Now the ju- boxing gym is closed. The gym is closed too for the basketball. Now you gotta play basketball outside. The handball courts are gone. People are asking what's going on.
Yeah.
That's why the, the kids are doing what they're doing.
Yeah, no, no, I get it, yeah. Kids need to have something to do.
Yeah.
You shouldn't have to pay to play basketball inside West Park, the community center.
Yeah.
That'd be, that's silly.
Okay, we're gonna have to go uh, if we're gonna get to all these questions, we're gonna have to go speed round?
Yeah, I have, there's only, I only have one left in the chat, so you go.
Okay.
At least that's what I have. I only have one.
Alright, speed round. Alright, so we'll try to keep these answers within, you know, a few seconds. Okay.
Pressure, no pressure.
Alright. E-bikes, regulations?
Regulations. I have a thirteen year old daughter, she has an e-bike, so.
Regulate her.
Yeah, I do regulate her. And that's what everyone else should be doing. Regulate your own kids. The shitty, the city shouldn't be worried about regulating kids on e-bikes. That's a, that's responsibility.
And then getting them tickets, come on now.
Yeah, well, it's a classic. You live in a good city when that's our focus. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I write.
In LA, they don't give a shit about it. I was in Inglewood yesterday. They weren't like, what are we gonna do about e-bikes, you know?
No, I know. There, there's bigger fish to fry in my opinion.
Alright. We went too long, okay. So, in general, safety, people do not feel safe with the vagrants. What are we gonna do?
I don't know what we're gonna do. I, I, that's all VPD, right? So. For people to know VPD has a PTF Patrol Task Force. There's, I think there's like eight officers now in PTF. Those guys run basically eight to five, Monday through Friday during the day. They don't have beats, they just drive around town. And that's their main focus is just kinda handling the vagrancy issues.
But what are we scared of? I'm, I would, I think I need further clarification on this actually, like. Are we just scared cause they're vagrants? Are they committing crimes? Like I don't.
I'm not scared of any vagrant.
I'm confused.
I think, I think people don't.
If they're committing crimes, then okay. But if people are just like, on the street, like combining their own business, like why are we scared of them? Cause they don't have a house. No, this person, I'm just asking like.
I don't know, that's, it's a question from the internet.
It's just weird. I'm, I need clarification.
We need clarification.
Yeah, why are you so scared? Okay.
I'm assuming they're talking about vagrants who are causing issues or.
Yeah.
Property crime or petty theft, doing drugs out in public. And we have all that. So I assume that's, I assume that's who they're talking about.
Criminals, they're not vagrants. They're criminals.
And I think that's what, in my opinion, that's why I associate as a vagrant is someone who is out there up to no good.
Got it.
That's, that's what I, that's what I assume. So that's, that's why I said that.
Thank you for that. That, that does make sense.
Okay, uh, what's your thoughts on drinking piss water? And I think they're talking about the water pod, project and uh, yeah, yeah, the water project.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I can go on about that project.
Thank you for that question, yeah.
For a long time. If you look on my Instagram, I have a couple of videos about that. One of them's like eight minutes long, I think. I'll give you that. No, I'm good.
He's politician.
I know, I, people can like snip this and then like.
I'm not opposed, no.
You know, when he's like running for something else.
Yeah, yeah.
This one time.
That's one thing.
You know, you never know.
You, you're hearing it here on record that I'm not running for any other public office.
I think other people have said that in the past too.
They have, but I didn't believe them when they said that, so.
Yeah, you believe yourself.
Yeah.
Okay.
How are you going to aid council member Campos's advocacy for more ADA accessibility in city hall and throughout the city?
They certainly need to. I think the city of Ventura dropped the ball on that. I think it was, she's almost what, eighteen months into. Her role as a council member before they did anything about her even basic access and.
That was a disgrace.
Yeah, that was bullshit.
That was embarrassing.
That was way embarrassing.
So, and the fact that the, the discussion went on even after the issue was raised. Uh, within, with council as a whole, it was, still went on for too long after that. It was, yeah, it was, it was pretty embarrassing.
Mind blowing.
Uh, the Ventura River Trail, how are you enjoying it? Commissioner Rodriguez oversaw it. I guess they wanted to get some credit for Rodriguez.
Good job Rodriguez. So yeah, I like it. I use it. I run my bike all the time, all around town.
Alright.
What about you think about the gas bill on the harbor? Is it on the harbor? By McDonald's?
They get the oils, the gas leak.
Oh yeah, we're gonna, well, they still don't know exactly what happened yet. There's uh, I was at council, they had a special meeting two weeks ago. Um, there's an investigation ongoing. If you live like down on that end of Pierpont, Monmouth. You're gonna be, you're not really gonna get access down there for several months, they said, the cleanup effort's gonna take. They know at least two thousand gallons was leaked into the sewer system.
Wow.
But my guess is it's a lot more than that.
Wow.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I think there was a little bit of cover up. In my opinion, this is my opinion, this is not anything that anybody's told me. That there was a little bit of a cover up from the, the, the gas station. I don't know how a gas station can reduce two thousand gallons of gas before they raise a red flag. I think it was certainly probably went on longer than they, they anticipated. I know that I heard in the special meeting, um, the investigators with Ventura Fire Department are looking into basically the books and the inventory of the gas station.
Yeah.
There's the fire department right now.
There they are. So until they do that, we're not gonna really know how much gas was lost. But it was at least two thousand gallons.
Yeah, citizens of Ventura, keep your eye on this. Don't let them tell you, don't let them fool you. Are you uh, do you plan on, oh, I'd know where this uh, came from. Do you plan on uh, leading your voice to more Chumash representation to, in our city?
Yes, Casey, I am.
Yes, Casey, we got you.
We got you, Casey.
While planning your election, has there been anything you've wished you didn't do or would do differently?
Um, yeah. You know, the, the only thing I, I mean, I think everybody probably wishes they would have done something differently. The biggest thing I would have, I wish I would have done different is, there was a, for a while there, I was running unopposed. And the city almost didn't have a, or, they didn't, almost didn't hold an election in District Seven, cause I was gonna be the only candidate. Which is kinda weird. I felt weird about it at the time too. It doesn't seem very democratic to me. But um, then you know, the, the other candidate threw his. His name in like last day of the filing window. Um, but there was a few weeks there, I was kind of like living in La La Land. I was laying limbo. And I kinda like put everything on pause. And um, I don't know if anything would have been different for me if I would have like kept moving forward like I had two or three opponents. During that time, but you know, I'll never know. I can't go back, so.
Yeah. Took your foot off the gas a little.
Took my foot off the gas for about three, three weeks or so, so.
Oh, I would too if I was running unopposed.
Right? I mean, I was like, what is happening? It was kinda, yeah, it was, it was interesting time.
That was his plan all out, along that sneaky. We have to, my wife told me, we have to invite, if we have Alex on, we have to invite the guy he's going against.
You can invite him. Yeah, I don't think he's gonna show up, but you can certainly invite him.
Yeah, we will invite him. Yeah, yeah. We will invite him, uh, we're not gonna hold our breath. If you're elected, will you give Patty and Glenn Overly a key to the city?
Yeah, they're gonna be the first ones to give a key to the city too. I'll give them a key to my house too. That's how much I, I love those people.
Do you have a, uh, do you, I didn't know you have that power.
I don't think, I'll make one though.
Yeah, we'll make a key. We'll give you a key to the Ty pod, Overly's. Uh, are you a five o'clock council meeting guy or a six?
That's a good question. I think I'm a six o'clock meeting guy, but three meetings a month, not two. That's something I've said openly in public. I've been advocating for that for like, for a while. Um, the reason why these council meetings go late is cause they don't have enough meetings.
Yeah.
So if they have three meetings a month, I've said that before I was even a candidate for city council, that you guys aren't having enough meetings. Uh, there's no reason that these meetings should be going until eleven o'clock, twelve. I've been at meetings until twelve thirty at night before, almost one o'clock. That's insane. Some of these people work full-time jobs, which is fine. You can't expect everyone to be retired that runs for city council. You don't want them to be. So the only logical step in my opinion is to have more meetings. If some of them are two hours long, then they're only two hours. Then you get on you.
Yeah, cool.
You're at home by eight o'clock, tuck your kids into bed. But you're never gonna know unless you have, have more meetings. Three meetings a month. Is uh, something I would advocate for with this current council. It wouldn't happen, I'll tell you that right now. But um. The majority of them are opposed to that. I already know that. But uh, that's something I would, I would go for.
Uh, is it okay for a project to be slapped with a fine if they don't build inclusion units?
They're not slapped with a fine. They, if, if you don't pay, if you don't build affordable units, you can pay a fee. So you can call, I guess you can call it a fine, but yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
If your developer wants to come into town, then you gotta offer a certain amount of affordable units. If you don't, then you have to pay a fee. That the city can use to kind of uh, use to build more housing themselves.
Um, as a side note to that, I would just like to add that I'm on the affordable housing list and I actually got uh, called at the lottery for the KB.
You did, okay.
However, I still could not afford one.
Thank you for telling me.
I had to pass.
Yeah, that's uh.
That sucks.
There's uh, people, you know, these, these units are called, whether it's an apartment or, or for sale homes, they're called affordable. But that doesn't mean low income. There's different, there's different levels of, of affordable.
Anything's affordable.
Is like the blanket description of something. Is like the blanket description of something that's not priced at market rate. So that could be moderate income, it could be low or very low income.
Maybe it needs to be defined better.
Yeah, so KB Homes, those ones are moderate income units, I believe, so, and they base the moder, the income levels off of the county, not the city.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, and
Yeah.
Everyone deserted the last year, the, all, they've read the articles, Ventura County's like one of the most expensive counties to live in in the nation.
Mm-hmm.
So that's.
My wages haven't kept up.
That's right.
Clearly.
What about, uh, safe places to park at night for, for those that are living in their cars?
Yeah, there should be, this was just talked about, oh, oh, it wasn't in council meetings, it was at that housing homelessness form we talked about. There should be, we can't ignore the problem that people are living in their cars and RVs.
Hmm.
Um, it just, so I think the city has a responsibility to find somewhere where, if it's city property, or, or pri, like private-public partnership, I don't know. Um, just allowing anybody to park there, well, obviously, obviously it's not a logical uh, solution to the problem, but we've seen before, a few years ago, the city offered permits for RVs to park off Cricket Palm, anybody who lives off the avenue or at the thirty-three saw that. We could do some kind of program, program like that.
Alright, um, view on the attempted flag policy, LGBTQ community, what are you gonna do?
I think, uh, that, I think the timing of that was atrocious, and I think it just goes to show how kind of out of touch some, some people.
Jim Duran, he didn't say it, we did, come on, man. We know what you're doing, don't be such a slide dog.
I think, uh, you know, and, and, the something I brought up is, you know, I think in an attempt to do that, it kind of blew back in his face big time. The first time the city of Ventura ever had a, a flag, a a flag-raising celebration for Pride Month was, take a guess, this year.
Yeah.
So, we never had a celebration in front of City Hall to raise a pride flag, we just did it. Most people didn't even know it was there. Um, and I think, you know, it's, to me, it's like a non-issue.
And people started digging into like his past then, cuz like, like people in that community.
He got dragged.
And they started looking, oh, was he covering up his son's, uh, statutory rape and stuff like that, and then it was like, that didn't work out for Duran, cuz now people are looking into your shit.
Everyone's got skeletons.
Everyone, except me.
Yeah, this guy's squeaky clean right here.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
It, okay, Stony three, three, three wants to know, if you received a one million dollar grant to use for our city any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Oh, man, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Well, I'd, I'd have to think about where that one million dollars can go the longest. It wouldn't, one million dollars on, like, infrastructure projects would probably get you a few potholes filled. So probably, probably go to some kind of beautif, beautification projects, like maybe planting more trees. I mean, you could plant a lot of damn trees with a million bucks.
Junior will fill your potholes for like, what, forty bucks?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Two bucks. Maybe spend that a million and, and try to do some things over at, uh, Kimmel Park, I mean, that park's still half done.
Yeah, it is. They kinda, yeah, they never thought about it, but, yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
Like, half of it's like the wilderness.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a dirt lot.
Like alligators in there. Um, do you support the city council's advocacy for Rubicon? I don't know what that is, um, apologies. It's not the Ventura Arts and Culture Commission that guides funding in such subject? That's not a speed round question, but whatever.
Yeah, it just came up, though, so this person's probably, uh, aware of that situation, so, yeah, the Rubicon, we just had, like, the budget workshops, basically the council approved the budget for twenty twenty-five. And the Rubicon is kinda hurting, right? Like, all the arts are hurting. All, obviously with the economy, it's probably worse than normal. So the Rubicon was asking city council to put some money into the budget that, that would be dedicated for the Rubicon. Um, I don't know, I don't, not necessarily for that. I think dedicating that, those funds for one specific, uh, place is not the intent of like supporting the arts, right? I think if the Rubicon is, is having issues with funding, then they can, there's other means to get some kind of partnerships, private partnerships, or get funding options. I don't think the, the taxpayers in the city of Ventura should be uh, keeping them afloat. I think we could certainly help them a little bit, but, you know, we had, uh, council member Sanchez Palacios, I think she wanted the city of Ventura to add half a million dollars a year into the budget to help the Rubicon. Which is, do you want five hundred million dollars going to one theater, or do you want it to, you know, plant more trees, or fix roads, or, you know, things like that. It's, it's a tough question, but, in my opinion, uh, five hundred thousand dollars shouldn't go to one, um, specific. If you're gonna put it directly into the arts, and that one's gonna be spread out, you know, uh, small pieces of the pie, then, yeah, absolutely. If you wanna increase that budget half a million, then go for it, but.
Alright, uh, just a few minutes left. Uh, favorite restaurant in District Seven? This would be careful now, careful now.
Question, I used to, I used to ask that question to everyone, remember?
That's true, this is a Jennifer's special, yeah.
Fa- fast casual, Harbor Mart has the best sandwich, Mommy Grill, too, that's, those are tough ties for, number one, for a quick, like, lunch sandwich spot. If you haven't been to the Harbor Mart, the, the sandwich is theirs.
I'm going now.
You're going now. Um, man, restaurant, I, I live by Kibo, I walk there all the time.
Hmm.
Their happy hour, when they have their happy hours, their seasonal happy hour, we go there at eight o'clock. I go there with my kids, cuz my kids are, like, insane, they love sushi, so, we go there, we go there and go nuts, it's, when you have like, four people in a family and two kids that eat, like savages, uh, sushi's like, not something that you could do all the time, so. This, the Kibo happy hour rules.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it. Favorite small business in District Seven?
Oh, man.
Ooh, could it be the pawn shop? Oh, god, am I?
You might be.
I don't think I am.
No, you're probably District One.
Yeah, cuz I think, uh, Schroder.
Yeah, you're just.
I think Schroder is ours.
Okay.
Yeah, he's seven.
Does he?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You're seven. You probably see Alex's signs outside, you know, that's how you're in seven, right? Yeah. I'm gonna steal one of your signs and put it on our show. Just giving you a heads up. Um.
We should do a fundraiser at the shop.
Ooh. We must disclose everything.
I've done them before for, uh, the Palm Brokers Association, we've had like state legislators.
Oh, nice.
Haven't done it in years.
Okay.
What do you think about?
Let's do it.
Oh.
Ventura Forward? Is it Ventura Forward?
Ventura Forward?
Yeah, Spencer?
Junior coming with the hot shots.
That is a hot shot.
Junior goes straight for the tea.
He does. I think, I think Spencer, he does some good things, I don't see anybody out there cleaning up as much as that guy does. I think that's a good thing.
Good answer.
Yeah.
Yep, there you go.
Next question?
If you wanna, uh, favorite story so far on this, uh, campaign that you've been running, besides coming here?
What, what's that say? Repeat the question?
What's your favorite, uh, moment in this campaign so far?
Oh, man. The campaigning, that, so, as someone who's never experienced it, it's a lot of work. Um, this end part, like, canvassing the neighborhoods, like, for the last several weeks, I've been canvassing, door knocking.
Yeah.
I have a group of people helping me, they're all, I, I don't have any, uh, endorsement volunteers helping me, it's all residents in the district, all friends of mine, or people that I've met, people that wanna support me. Um, we've knocked on, I think, twenty-eight hundred doors, two thousand eight hundred doors already in District Seven, passed out a little door hanger. So, um.
That, that stuff works, too.
It works, man, I mean, last Sunday, I was doing it from, I took my son, we were out doing it for almost three hours down in Pierpont. And then, uh, you know, people wanna talk to the candidates, so volunteers would tell me, hey, these people, they don't know which way they wanna go. And then I would literally go back to those houses and, and chat with people, I had coffee with a couple people last Sunday.
Yeah, there's like a post on Reddit, some, somebody that's like, yeah, somebody, I did, told him I didn't know who Alex was, and then two hours later, he showed up at my door, and he's like, what kind of questions do you have?
Yeah, I did that Sunday. Yeah, was that from the Sunday?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's cool, cuz you meet some cool people, and it's like, if I wanna do this, I'm not doing it for any other reason than I wanna.
Yeah.
You know, I wanna, I wanna do a good job, you know, so, I don't think there's any way, other way to do it, other than listen to people.
I think it's awesome that you're meeting good people, cuz, uh, most people suck.
Well, I get, you know, it's not all good experiences. Canvassing is not all good experience.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm sure. We should, we should do another episode on just that.
Uh, yeah, I can tell you some stories for sure.
Yeah, yeah. We should follow you with a camera and make it, it's not like a reality show.
It's funny, the different, the different neighborhoods, too, it's a completely different experience, like, doing it in Midtown was totally different than doing it in, like, Pierpont and the Keys. Pierpont and the Keys is such tight community.
We're calling a motel in Texas.
God, we are not.
What motel, the Roadhouse?
He has to suck us into this every single time.
Alright, so we need a, we need a, uh, motel room, because we, we're running a campaign. Hi, how you doing? Uh, much love to you on this Tuesday night. All love and energy from the universe. Um, I, I need a, uh, motel room, I was wondering if you had any availability this month?
Yes, so we do.
Okay. Well, we're running a campaign for kind of a big deal. Uh, we're talking District Seven, okay?
Yeah, yes, sir.
You knew, you've heard of District Seven, and like how Midtown's like really kind of the next big thing.
You can come here directly.
Yeah, so there's four of us, okay? So we all just had a couple questions before we booked this room. Okay, so my question was, um, is there a jacuzzi, and, um, how many people are in there a night? I'm a germ folk, and I, and I, um, didn't wanna get like monkeypox. Okay, fantastic. Junior, go ahead, what's your question?
How high is the roof?
Hello?
Excuse me, how high is the roof?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, hey, we tried. Um, hey, Alex, thank you very much for, uh, being on the show.
Yeah, this is rad.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna come back before the voting time happens, let us know. Sorry, smoked a, smoked a joint, I couldn't remember, uh, election, yeah.
It's a lot different now, though, cuz everyone gets it, everyone has sent a ballot in the mail, and they're all postmarked by the seventh, which is yesterday. So this week, everyone's gonna get their ballot, which is kinda crazy, even though they're not due till November fifth. You know, I don't, I think most people are like me, they wait till the last few days anyway to return their ballot, um. But it's still, you know, campaigning's a different thing, you know?
Well, I think now's the time, do we, are we gonna do our, uh, endorsements? Uh, what, who are you gonna vote for in District Seven? As a District Seven resident?
District Seven?
Yeah, who are you gonna vote for, for city council in District Seven?
Are you resident of District Seven?
No.
You're not?
No. Cause I don't live across the street no more.
Alright, 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 alright.
Somebody came from out of town and bought their house.
Just, just, okay, I'm gonna vote for Alex. Alex. I'm gonna vote for Alex here.
I'm voting for him, too, just like my house.
Jen?
I'll probably vote for Alex.
Yeah, so there we go, we got the triple, yeah, we're, okay, so there you go. You got the endorsement of the Ventura Tide Pod. That would, we, that was really tough to get. And then we'll invite the other guy on, too, and then, you know, maybe he'll convince us, uh, to vote the other way, or, but most likely, like, most people on city council, he's not gonna wanna come in here.
Yeah, let me know if he wants to come. I'll have to come back.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. Everybody, go to the, uh, Pawn Shop of Ventura, go get your shit. Um, I was just joking when I said the sound was the, the Pawn Shop's fault, it was totally my fault, cuz I've, I, I know what I did. And I gotta fix it. I know what I did.
I mean, I think all of us knew it was your fault.
Uh, just in case somebody did not know, it was Junior's fault. And then, uh, Junior, everybody, follow Junior the Joint Roller. Um, if you see him on the street, he's selling Ventura Tide Pod t-shirts, that's a hundred percent Junior's business there. Go help, help a brother out. Um, you can also buy those t-shirts at the Pawn Shop of Ventura, yeah, and, uh, that's it, right? Yeah, and in Junior's DMs, yeah. And also, if the, any dick pic he sent to Mina, please send to Junior as well, alright?
No, I'm good.
No dick pics.
And, uh, Alex, because you didn't get a chance to fill out your statement, um, I guess now's a good time to do your final statement for the people of Ventura.
Yeah, we covered a lot, that was good, man. Thanks for all the questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that was solid. I think, uh, I'm excited for this, I really am, this is something I've been thinking about for a long time. I, I filed my intent to run for city council in March of this year, and I did that on purpose, so everyone knew I was serious about it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think the people of Ventura are ready for kinda like some, the new, the new, um, kind of the new perspective on leadership here in town, and kind of the next generation of leadership. And I'm not just doing this for, like I said, I'm, I'm promising you, I, I own a small business, I'm not, politics is not my thing, I just care about the city. I have no intention of political office, anything outside of Ventura City Council. But, uh, you know, I'm willing to put in like years on this thing, this is not just a one-term thing for me, so, uh, yeah, appreciate the time.
Congratulations, and, uh, uh, your heart's in the right place, so, I hope you win.
Yeah, go to my website.
Like, where are you?
Yeah, I'm on Insta.
Follow this guy, Alex Mangane.
Yeah, First Name Mario is my Insta.
Right?
At First Name Mario, check it out there.
Yeah, go to my, my Instagram at First Name Mario, and, uh, website and all that stuff's on there.
Yeah, and, oh, I was gonna tell you, we went to high school together, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember. You played soccer, right?
Yeah, yeah. You had a mohawk, right? Kinda. Did, sometimes did you have a mohawk?
I don't think I had a mohawk. No, I didn't have a mohawk.
I remember, you know what I remember about you once? This is a good, this is good for your campaign, maybe.
Okay, good.
Um, I was gonna, there's this guy, he wanted to, uh, fight me, and he was like way bigger, and I was like, well, like, I got a bat in my car, so if he comes at me, I'm gonna go run to my car, and, and then you told me, um, you were just kinda happened to walk by in the conversation, you told me, don't do that, because if you win a fight with a bat, that's not really a win. And if you lose, that's a huge loss. You got your ass kicked with a bat, somebody that doesn't, that doesn't have a bat.
All true things.
And, uh, just walked away like zen master, and I was like, oh, good points, I'm not gonna fight this guy at all, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, there you have it. So you got my vote. That's good, that's, that, yeah, that's, uh, good foresight for a high schooler. Most high schoolers are like, yeah, hit him with the bat, I wanna see it, yeah.
I like that, man.
Alright, anything else, guys? Let's end this show. Alright, everybody, let, uh, we did a AI song to go out on, alright?
If you should play Electric Shadow.
You want me to? Okay, I'll play, I'll play, uh.
Oh, you missed the intro song.
Yeah.
Did you hear it?
No.
Oh, man.
I'll play it for you after, yeah. Yeah. I'll send it to you, Alex, that's your new campaign song. Alright, Junior, what are you saying, dude? Just say it. You had all show, and now you're gonna come in.
I was just saying, shout out to two girls at Chick-fil-A, and shout outs to the Tree Factory, and shout out to Ventura City.
Oh, shout out to Embark, too.
Yeah, there it is.
Embark. Lovely Hugh Photography, thank you for your photo, um, Divine Chaos Art, thank you for this new painting, we really appreciate it. We'll be putting it in a better place on the show, next show. And then everybody, listen to this song, it's called The Moon. Is that okay? Or do you want one of their newer ones? Rush Seer, or Cosmo Pumpkin Tree, uh, Astro Chor, the, um, Forbidden Harmony, okay? Forbidden Harmony Live.
Yeah, it is a Forbidden Harmony Live.
Okay, so everybody, this is Jennifer's son, his name is Jack, he's a bass player in this new band that's taking Ventura by storm. They're called Electric Shadow. You can see them play at, uh, where, Tony's?
No, their next show is actually gonna be in Ojai at the Ranch House, I think.
Okay, yeah.
The Deer Lodge.
The Deer, oh, nice. Yeah, let me know, are you gonna go?
Yeah.
Me and Junior will go.
Okay, yeah, we'll give you the teats.
I'm gonna bring some, uh, I'm gonna bring some underwear to throw, Jack. Alright, this is called Forbidden Harmony by Electric Shadow, and then we're gonna go out, thank you, Alex. Seriously, dude, you're gonna win, you're gonna win, you got this, bro, yeah, alright, thanks for watching.
How do they know what always comes next in the movies they see? In the future of me, all these rules we have to follow. But what about the secrets like forbidden harmony? Forbidden harmony. Something so simple, but really hard to leave. What it means to me.